I'd like to call the meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. It looks like it's here. Summer, that is, close to it, it's coming. We were wondering a few weeks ago, right? Uh, roll call, since I don't have a clerk, uh, Chrissy.
Here.
Artie, I'm here. Joanne, are you here?
I'm here.
I'm here. Maureen.
Present.
Uh, Chris O'Regan, absent excuse, and Cindy Valentine, absent excuse. All right. That wasn't too difficult. Uh, first thing on the agenda, we have a public hearing for short-term rentals. I will entertain a motion to open, uh, the, uh, public hearing for short-term rentals. Support? No, that's, well, okay, I'll make it out of the motion. And you have support, and we'll make it at seven oh... Two. So all in favor of opening up the hearing, uh, public hearing for short-term rentals at 7:02, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and a boo if this motion carries. So I will open it up. Just make a quick statement first. We're at, actually, under this ordinance, we're not even act, actually required to have a public, uh, hearing, but, uh, we wanted to do so so we can get input from the public, um, on this. And this kind of stemmed from, I know the planning commission was, uh, dealing with this for quite some time, wasn't it, Mark?
That's correct, yep.
And, uh, there was a lot of, uh, discussion there, and quite frankly, we haven't really heard a whole lot of it. And, uh, it was recommended, this ordinance, to them. I gave it to legal. They tweaked it a little bit, changed it a little bit. And, um, we, uh, have it before us tonight. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna speak now for myself personally. Um, there's a couple of things I'd like to see changed in it. In there it says the driveways have to be paved or asphalt or concrete. Uh, I think that it would be okay if it's stoned or slash gravel also. I know, we received, like, all these emails, um, that are, are basically people who rent homes out, it sounds like most of them, and that was one concern, and that is a huge expense to pave a driveway, and let's face it, we don't have any other ordinance that says, you know, you have to have a paved driveway. So why should we do it for this? Um, that's my own personal feelings. I don't know what these guys think, they could shoot it down, but we'll get to that later. And, um, also, the reason we're doing this is, um, is it's a definite asset to our community to have these short-term rentals. We have a lack of hotel rooms, everybody knows that. And, uh, and truth be known, I have an Airbnb right next to me on Harson's Island. I have zero problems with that, I love it. Um, I talk to the people every, all the time, and it works out very well. Um, and, uh, but we, we have to make sure that the, these rentals are an asset to our community and not a detriment, um, and that they're safe. And that's what I'm, I'm hoping that this ordinance, uh, will, uh, will, will give us. They, um, in other words, say if there's a big problem at one, we need to know who to call, the property manager or the owner. Uh, if we just show up there, there's no representation of ownership there, there's not a whole lot we can do. So we need to know the contact, that's one thing, of, of the owner or, or the manager of the group. And, um, that, you know, that's an important thing. We need to make sure that there's smoke, smoke detectors in the bedrooms and a CO2 monitor somewhere, um, just, just for the safety of the people who are renting it. And, and our own first responders and people in the township. Um, a big thing is, you know, we are a residential, a residential, uh, community, and we need to keep that character of a residential community staying the same. It's not fair to someone to buy a home in a residential area and then all of a sudden it, it becomes kind of like non-residential. And, uh, that's what I hope this, this accomplishes. So, that being said, do, um, anyone want to speak their, uh, anything on, uh, public or for short-term rentals? Yes, sir. You didn't take long, Gary.
Thank you. I've been vaccinated, but I still wear it.
How'd it go for you, the vaccination?
Went good.
Good.
The first shot, the second day, I felt worn out for a couple hours. I'll give you this part, I threw up, then I felt better.
Good.
So sometimes, you know, when you get sick?
Yep.
You feel instantly better. The, uh, excuse me, I represent a group of vacation rental owners in Ira and Clay Township.
Yeah, we got your pack and I distributed.
And I got some more for you.
Yeah.
So I'll give you the original, since you're kind of like the acting clerk.
Oh, boy.
Of sorts. So I marked down their original. And I'll give one to your partners in practice, I'll speak as my head would turn. So this part is to supplement what I gave you previously, but what, I had gotten the draft of the ordinance in tonight's meeting and so on, and it says in the beginning of your ordinance about controlling all existing or proposed vacations, but if it's an existing facility, so the question is, is this a zoning ordinance or a regulatory ordinance? Because if they're in existing, from a lawyer's perspective, who's been on both sides of the fence, representing municipalities and property owners, if it's a non-conforming use and you didn't have any zoning ordinance or regulatory ordinance, I think they have the right to continue their program. Then in section two, it says, whereas numerous vacation rentals have been established within the township, Clay seeks to regulate the use of dwelling as vacant rentals. So my question is, these numerous vacation rentals, and previously we gave you a map of the greater Clay and Ira area, there's like sixteen of them that we know of that are in that magazine. So that, for two communities, it doesn't seem like that's enormous number, and so I also wonder, what's the data that says these facilities are a problem to your community or some other community? And if it's not a problem, well, does the ordinance really need to be adopted? Under the building code, you have to have smoke detectors in each building. It's wise to have carbon monoxide detectors, and it's wise, from the government's perspective, to have a list of these facilities and a contact person, and maybe a $25 registration fee. But beyond that, it seems like there's overkill in this ordinance. The, uh, then it says in section three, a limitation for 30 days. Well, if a person rents their place out for 31 days, then they don't have to apply, uh, comply with this ordinance because it's longer. I don't think Clay Township has any ordinance, if I owned a house, that I rented for sixty-six months, or for a year, or from month to month, that requires any registration or the payment of any fee. And any fee has to be nominal, otherwise it violates the heavily amendment because it becomes a tax. It can't be a source of revenue to run your township. So in my letter in section four, I said maybe a $25 fee is appropriate. One place in your ordinance, it says administrative fee, then it says in another spot, a registration fee. So my question is, is that an inconsistency? Are there two fees or just one, and there was a mix-up in the language? Then on the top of page two, my comment is, the ordinance provides in part that you have to have a zoning complaint permit issued by the building department. Well, in some municipalities, if you're gonna use a commercial facility or industrial facility, you have to get a zoning compliance permit from the building department or the planning that says, yes, you're imposed, commercial or industrial use, if this location is appropriate because it's zoned for commercial or industrial. So maybe that was a typo. But generally, if you have a house and it's a, in a residential zoning district, you don't need any compliance permit, and I don't think your township has an ordinance, let's say like Monclemmons, if you have a rental facility, house, apartment building or whatever, you have to register it periodically with the city of Monclemmons, and they come around and do inspections, and it lasts for like two or three years. And I don't think your municipality has that, from my research. So to now impose this on one segregated section that has maybe eight or sixteen units in the two municipalities seems to be an overreaching by the government. I pointed out in the middle of page two, that registration fee versus administrative fee dichotomy. Then in paragraph six, in your ordinance, it says, you can only have two occupants in a bedroom. Well, I've been in at least one of these facilities. There's a large bedroom that looks out onto Anchor Bay, it's a gorgeous booth, it has two queen-sized beds. You can get around, there's no problem. That same facility has another bedroom that has a bunk bed, two people, one in each bunk, and a queen-sized bed. So you can have four, and years ago, I was in Chesapeake at a meeting in behalf of a lady who was gonna have, uh, a daycare center, and it was all guys up there, and I was representing her, and if you have less than six, you don't need the local approval. You can have up to twelve, you get local approval. One or two of the guys say, well, we think it's unsafe to have twelve children in your house. Which I love when they said that, because I said, I'm from a family of eleven, we lived in one house, and I went through all the professional people in my family, and there was one point, my oldest brother was born in forty-three, Sue was born in forty-six, Pat in forty-eight, I was in forty-nine, that's it, the war erupted production, and there was a few veterans in the audience, and I got a good chuckle. So, that restriction seems to be an overreach, because you don't say to somebody, you can only have a house with two bedrooms or three bedrooms, or you can't have, if you had four children, two sets of bunk beds in one bedroom. How's that within the government's purview, especially at the local level? The other provisions say that you have to give this summary of all the local ordinances. Well, you don't require that of anybody else, and if you have a noise ordinance, a lot of times it says, it cannot exceed sixty or seventy decibels at the property line. Well, there's a decibel meter, you can go out, and if the guy's playing the rock and roll band song too loud, he's in violation, whether it's one of your houses or one of these places. And anybody within your municipality, whether they're a resident or just passing through, if they see criminal activity, they can call Clay Police Department, St. Clair County Sheriff's Department, the state police, and if they see some building code problem, they can come in here during the day, except for on Friday, and make a complaint. So that again is...
No, you can come on Friday, the police are open twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, the police, but I'm saying if it was a building department thing, I think the building department not, might not be open. And you already spoke to this, where I pointed out the paved driveway thing. Whether it's Clay or Ira, a lot of your roads are gravel. You go down Wagner, it's gravel, a lot of the people's driveways. And a couple years, or last year in Lenox Township, they had this thing about paving, and I showed them an article from the DQ saying, less pavement is better, because the ground will absorb some of the water versus instantly going into a detention basin, then into this river or stream, and then into the St. Clair River or Lake St. Clair. And then there's a thing about provision as to number of parking spaces based on three persons and a car. Well, I give you the example, if a husband and wife and two children come, is that a violation of this proposal? And then there's numerous...
I could go there.
Right. Then there's numerous car company ads, one in particular with the Buick, where it's an SUV, the lady pulls up to the soccer field, and six kids get out of the car, and the coach is going, oh, that's so new. Well... And, you know, years ago, people had minivans, and you could get eight kids in the car. So, that restriction likewise, you know, flies in the face of what people drive, and if you go to any place, if you go to Kroger's, see how many SUVs and pickup trucks are in the parking lot. Everybody's not driving a Mini Cooper. The, um...
Yep.
And if, and to me, to say it's a misdemeanor to violate this registration thing is a slap in the face to these people, because the one place, it's, it's in Ira that I've been to, I just know from voting, that place was a mess. The seawall right at the beginning of Swan Creek was deteriorated beyond belief. These people bought it, they invested a lot of money just in the city wall, they got an unbelievable view of Anchor Bay. Things made it better.
It's a great spot.
You know, and you, you see it from the lake, you see it from Swan Creek. The, uh, and then the other thing that kind of, from a legal perspective, there was this proposed resolution, 2021-16, and it's already got the votes in there as a's. All voted a's. And, so why have a public hearing if there's already a document in place showing, and it also showed who was gonna be here, and that one person was gonna be absent, well, tonight proves in a footing, two people are gone, including your clerk. So, you know, it's okay for a municipality to draft an ordinance or a resolution, but the better drafting is leave a few things blank, so there's not a predetermination that maybe somebody met outside of this public hearing in violation of the...
That did not happen.
And said, hey, this is what we're gonna do, boys and girls, and that, you know, I don't think any judge would, would like that. The, um, is it already has the date it's gonna be adopted today, the publication date, and, you know, sometimes people say this is when the publication is gonna be, but by, you get it to the newspaper a half hour too late, and it's the next week. I've seen that happen more than once. So, from the group's perspective, hey, we appreciate you having this public hearing. A lot of them didn't participate in the planning commission discussions because they weren't aware of it. And if they were, they'd have been here a lot sooner, and maybe I would have been involved a lot sooner. But, you know, just take your time, maybe establish a committee of people from the municipality and from the owners' group to come up with some language that everybody can live with, and meet your request as to registration, contact person, no one objects to that. No one objects to having a, a smoke detector, because even if you have an old home or a new home, you gotta have it, it's self-preservation. And just to take things, you know, one step at a time. And about fifty years ago, this September, I was a freshman in law school, Frank Sangstock was our property teacher, and when it came to zoning and municipal land regulations and so on, he would always say, you have to have a reasonable regu, uh, regulation. And he said, this was one of his great lines, you don't need an atomic bomb to kill a fly when a fly swatter will do. So, that's my thoughts, and if you have any questions, I try to answer them.
All right, well, thank you, Glenn.
Gary, but I knew who you were talking about.
Yeah, and, um, you brought some valid points, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you want, you know, volunteers, well, you can get volunteers, you know, to help you with the committee.
Okay.
And like I said a week ago in Ira, these people will give you a contact information if you want to come out and look at their place, and we gave you photographs that a lot of these places are in pretty good shape.
I, I myself have rented a lot of Airbnbs around, and most of them do, they'll have a thing on the refrigerator or the local ordinances for noise and, you know, bonfires and that kind of thing.
Right.
I've seen that, and where you should park and everything.
But as to the summary, if you leave it to, if there's sixteen or eighteen or twenty of these things in your community, and every person has a different summary, but they miss out one, and your code enforcement officer goes like, hey, Mary, you left this one out, so you're in violation, seems to me that the municipality, if they wanna have this edict, they gotta put the summary together that goes out to the people so that they're in compliance. And it wasn't in your ordinance, but Ira, they wanted a sign in front of the place that you could read from the road. Well, that's a bad...
Our, our, our police chief did not like that.
Because what that is, is a sign, the place Mr. Bandit or Ms. Bandit is empty, ring the doorbell, nobody responds, there's no dog, it's time to do a little burglary job.
Yeah, our, our, just so you know, our police chief, you know, did not like that, number one, and number two, that kind of makes it, in my perspective, a more of a, takes away the residential feel of the, of the neighborhood.
Yeah, and a few of them have like a light, small lighthouse, or some other...
Yeah.
A flamingo or something, just so that when their renter is driving down Dixie Highway or the Dyke Road or Wagner, you have a little idea that this is what to look for. Versus a sign.
All right, thank you much.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Move, state your name and, uh, address, please.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sarah Potter, and, uh, my address is eight four five three Dixie Highway, Ira Township. Uh, we have the vacation rental on Wagner.
Can you pull your mic down?
Yep. Yep, we have the vacation rental on Wagner, and I appreciate...
Wagner, that, in Ira?
Yep.
Okay.
The one that Gary was just referring to. Okay. All right, um, we sent quite a few emails today, and, um, although I think, Artie, can I approach you?
Sure, yeah, I, I, I gave them to the whole board, all the...
Okay, so you've got a copy?
Yep. Yep, thank you.
So I know that came in, um, last minute for review, but again, you know, we're gathering things as quickly as we can, and we would have been involved sooner had we been part of the, um, discussion during the planning committee, so, um, you know, I, I guess we anticipated a little bit more dialogue to this point, and we tried to hit every point in some of, some of these letters to you today. So we just, I, I'd like to brief, briefly go over the, the points that many of us share. Um, and I speak because, I speak on behalf of both townships because it's going to be adopted by both, obviously, same attorney...
We don't know what Ira's gonna do.
Same draft, same attorney, and same discussion, same timing, it's, it's pretty evident. So we want to make sure that, um, we're acting, you know, in good faith with the teams that are developing, the board and the planning commissions, um, to make sure that it's equitable and, uh, that you also get what you want out of this. But there are some things that we wanted to, to point out. Single-family dwelling is an issue. Um, I'm just gonna go point by point, but I just hit it really quick. Single-family dwelling, um, we have, uh, long-term rentals that are duplexes, um, you've got the motels that have multiple, um, studio style, and, and when we look at these other rentals that we're talking about, try to apply that to the, the short-term vacation rentals, because we do have some that have multifamily, or they're studio in style. So when we say single-family dwelling, the language currently excludes those other types, and we do have some of those. So, you know, with the bedrooms, the bedroom limitation, accommodations without considering studio style, because those would include Murphy beds or pull-out sofas or anything like that for additional two people or four people, depending on how, how large the facility was, maybe we consider the size, or there's, on a case-by-case basis, you're evaluating what the limitations are to set that occupancy per house. Okay? The valid occupancy permit, I think Gary hit on that well, as far as what does, you know, how does that, um, affect, how, what's the cost to that? You mentioned zoning, so does that affect our current zoning? Because we're not always long-term, or excuse me, we're not always short-term rentals. Off-season, we enjoy it ourselves, so we don't want to have it rezoned. It's gonna be a single-family...
Yeah, this isn't a zoning ordinance.
But it mentions the zoning compliance permit, and we're not sure where that was going.
Okay.
Okay. Vacation rental owners to consent to inspections. Well, we sure will, but given the appropriate scheduling, because we can't affect someone's privacy while they're staying with us. Registration fee, touched on that, thirty days. So off-season, there are workers that come into town from ETE and other locations that we want to accommodate. Um, some, some do and some don't, um, but it's an option that helps pay the bills, so we'd like to keep that open. It also isn't restricted for other rentals, like long-term rentals or motels or, you know, extended stays, so we, um, would like to have the same consideration. Two bedrooms, uh, excuse me, two per bedroom or two per finished floor, again, I think, you know, I think we're all flexible as long as we're considered that the, uh, size and amenities are considered, and there's so few of us, you know, you're talking sixteen of us in Ira and Clay, maybe a few...
There aren't more than that, if you go over Airbnb, about a hundred.
Okay, all right. But, if we all had to register, those things could be evaluated and on a case-by-case basis, you know, assessed for occupancy, overall occupancy. Long-term rentals, apartments, et cetera, um, we just want to make sure that everything is aligned, so we're not being sked, singled out. Right now, the, the language and, and the fines seem pretty, um, excessive and, uh, pointed to be discriminatory issue with us. So, you know, I think we've got a lot of work to work. Thank you for the concession on the paved driveways. I did a survey, over fifty percent for Ira and Clay Township are gravel or partial gravel driveways, residential, rental, whatever you want to call it, businesses, et cetera. So, thank you. Three per occupant, I actually wrote it the other way, so that it wasn't so many people per vehicle, but there were only, it, it limited the number of vehicles based on the occupancy, meaning that you get three per vehicle and then, um, so many vehicles to equal your occupancy. But there's a lot of instances, if you have the parking, why limit that? We have an ample amount of parking where we're at, and a lot of occasions fishermen will drive separately. One will bring the boat, one will drive a car, someone else comes in in their separate car, there's three cars there and there's three people, one boat, you know, that's what their plan was, but, so you add that with two teams, and we've got the room for that at our location, but that's six cars, so, you know, that's just something to consider. The fines, again, just want them in alignment with the existing ordinance, ordinances. And the limitations are one hundred, three hundred, five hundred, increasing range from first, second, and third fence. This exceeds that by far. So, you know, in alignment, I mean, we're not, we're small business, we're, we're not here to, um, violate, we're certainly putting a lot of money into our homes, we don't want anyone trashing them either. We're good stewards, we're good neighbors. If we start having fines like this, it's certainly not because we invited it, that should be on the tenant. So any other location that rents, the violators, and I'm gonna go back to my Michigan State Times, those college houses were awful. You know, and, and unfortunately, and, and it's not a fair comparison to even think of our locations as something similar to those, but, um, my husband and I met there, and we stayed in those houses, and believe me, if we got out of line, if, I say we, we as in college students, I didn't personally see it myself, but...
True, potentially.
Seventy-five dollars for the first noise violation after ten, and then it went up, and it wasn't to the house and it wasn't to the owner, it was to that group, the individuals staying there. So, we would like to know as quickly as you do, as the police do, and we'll be there to help. But to put it on us and potentially find us to extinction... But to put it on us and potentially fine us to extinction and then revoke our license, that the reason that we purchased or invested in the property isn't right. Just had some questions. Again, I think Gary touched on a few of them about registering. Excuse me, about the public hearing and having the notes down there that it was already accepted. You know, if you could just give us a little bit more time, open discussion, we can hopefully work together on the language.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Go Green. You guys look familiar, so that's all I'm gonna say. Okay, any other public comments?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
So...
State your name and address, please, first things.
I'm Hugh Cavendish, five one six zero two Huntley Avenue, New Baltimore, Michigan, four eight oh four seven. My business is licensed in New Baltimore and a licensed builder. I pay twenty dollars a year. The city holds my phone number. They know they can contact me if there's any problems with my business. I think twenty dollars is very reasonable to do something like this. I used to live at five one one nine Point Trumbull, right here in Clay on the river. My neighbor's yard was absolutely atrocious. He inherited the property from his grandmother. Junk carts, boats, weeds, rats. It was a major issue. The city kept setting out a code enforcer and they kept warning that individual. He'd get rid of a trash bag or he'd get rid of this or that. Nice guy, and he also had a renter that rented in his home, was very polite to me. But the place was a dump. My place was immaculate. It drove me out of Clay Township. I don't want to live next to a dump. I don't want to see that, okay? That was a normal resident that owned a house in Clay Township. In Clay Township, your code enforcer drove me to sell my home on the river that I loved. Now, I'm here today because I've recently renovated a house on Wagner down the road where the Potters are. I've also worked on their house on M-29. You can go look at my work, my work's impeccable. My company, everything about me is impeccable. Go look at my car, I can eat it. The Potters are the same way. The people that own these Airbnb's, when I pull up Airbnb and I'm a frequent shopper, I like Florida, just so everybody knows, but... So when I pull up a property on Airbnb, I'm yet to see a dump. I've never seen a dump. Do I think these properties need to pay maybe twenty dollars a year and register? Yes. I also owned, when I lived on the river here, four oh three Helen in Algenac, Kitzel one bedroom cottage that I rented weekly to fishermen in two thousand and five, six, and seven. I owned that property. Four hundred week furnished place and we never had a problem. We never had one problem. The place was immaculate. The neighbors all had my phone number just like we all have the Potters' phone number over on Wagner. I called her one day last summer and I said, "Just to let you know, somebody went down the road a little bit fast." Did you, you know? And, because it happened two times. Guess what? She handled it. She was over there immediately and she handled it. Okay? So I basically feel like I lived on Wagner pretty much for a year and a half because I renovated a place over there. But I've been to their property. I challenge you to go to these properties. It's immaculate, like immaculate. So before we go necessarily picking on the people that have invested lots of money in your community in Ira, I challenge you to really look at these properties. You've seen some video, I believe, right, or pictures, or they've been supplied, pictures have been supplied. But yet we allow the leaptated boat houses that could fall on a child. We allow abandoned cars. Look at the end of Wagner where a resident lives, the very end of M-29. There's like eight boats, wave runners, snowmobiles, cars. That's an issue, okay?
And that's in Ira, right?
That's in Ira.
I just want to...
And so I just sold the property that I built and it was a million-dollar property. It just sold in Mexico, Port of Arona for three point two million. Okay, people like Bob Seeger stayed there, okay? So that was some of my clientele. I'm looking to invest and Mrs. Potter has been actively searching within properties to invest in your community. I have money ready to invest, but I don't want to be harassed. But I agree there needs to be like a twenty-dollar fee a year. I agree to that. And there should be smoke detectors in every home. There should be safety precautions in every home. And if there's not, if there's not, people should be fined as things arise. Not necessarily the homeowner, but the tenant. Like let's say I'm renting from her and that caused a disturbance and I'm yelling and screaming. The police show up, who should get that disorderly time-out charge? Mrs. Potter? No, I should, is the tenant, okay? So I appreciate your time today. I'm here because I'm a business owner. I want to better New Baltimore, Ira, Clay Township. This is my love, this waterfront is my love. And, you know, I think we all can come to a resolution. A, I'm really disturbed that there's paperwork going around where it appears that you guys have already kind of made a decision on this. So that was poor. Whoever did that, that was a poor decision. And if this matter goes in front of the judge or proceeds, that definitely have to be addressed. But once again, thank you for your time.
Thanks a lot, Hugh, and I agree with you on that too.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Thank you so much, my name is Mark McLennan. I live in Shelby Township, but I own a house on Inglewood, seven eight six nine.
Mark, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
McLennan.
Okay.
As a kid, from age nine up, I grew up in Chesterfield Township, the so-called Gateway Anchor Bay. And I could never get an anchor bay, okay? As a kid, we used to go down a cop road and try to swim and cops would chase us off. And then it'd be a long bike ride up to Baltimore to have a swim. If you look at Lake St. Clair, it has always been a private lake. Start at Girl's Point and try to swim. Go up to St. Clair shores. Go to Mitchell Beach and swim if you dare. And then the second you hit, the only beach that's safe to swim in the whole, on the whole lake is New Baltimore. And when they built the park in Brannenburg, we lived in Chesterfield. It was a great place to play baseball, a great place to launch a boat, but we didn't have one. And I think that's a shame because I was in my sixties before I saw the flats and it's gorgeous. It's like a mini Grand Canyon, except there's no donkey rides available, okay? No way to see the beauty of the canyon and what's there. And that's what we try to provide in our house. Now, the ordinance is, we lived in Chesterfield again before we moved to Clay. And one of the things that we worried about is how close the homes were together, okay? The water was a dream. I mean, I come home from work, we're in the lake, it's just wonderful. My kids, my daughters, all three of them, they had three bathing suits, okay? My sons, they were out paddling around in the lake just having a ball. But the one thing we were worried about is with everyone so close together, we wondered if people would have their nose in our business. And I'm afraid that's always been the case. People on Inglewood have their nose in your business. Closeness breeds nosiness. And I really feel that if I have two boaters come in or three fishermen come in, I have two lots. And if all their vehicles are parked on my property, what business is it of yours if I have gravel or if their boats are on grass? Okay, I like having the grass. Why? When my six kids come in from out of state, they're all gone. There's nothing to hold them here. There's no business. Okay, maybe tourism is one and a half. I want grass for them. So it really is none of your business how we park as long as it's on the property. If I'm blocking traffic, if I'm making it difficult for people to get through, we have an issue and I agree. But one guest has boats, one guest doesn't. We have to be accommodating and take care of their needs. Next thing, I really think the whole idea of this regulation or this ordinance is wrong. It's way too much your nose is in my business. Way too much. Start with registration. As far as needing to look at smoke detectors, we just went through an insurance inspection. Any insurance company worth their salt is going to check for smoke detectors and they're gonna check for carbon monoxide and they're gonna ask, "Do you have a fire extinguisher?" And guess what? Verbal and Airbnb do also ask for that. So if we don't have that, we're in violation with all of them, okay? It's not a bad idea to check, but it's not necessary because it's already covered. Check, check, check. The basic tenor of this is we're the enemy, okay? I haven't heard any suggestions for cooperation with us. Why not come out to my house, see what I have and evaluate and then...
I think I've been to your house.
Well, I've never hosted here.
You called me.
I did call you.
You've invited me out there and I went out there and took a look and saw it online, so, yeah, I've seen it.
Well, well, thank you.
Yes.
The thing I'd like to do is have you inside. I'd like you to see how we greet our guests. I'd like you to, I'd like you to see what we do to make sure that they respect my former neighbors, okay? Because that's a concern. As far as people having our phone number, everyone on the block has their number, okay? I want them to have it because if anything's wrong, I want to know about it. Oh, to backstep just a minute. The reason why we got into vacation rentals is when we moved away from here, we didn't want to sell a house because I never thought I could afford waterfront again. I thought it'd be a lost thing, never have it. My kids loved it and I wanted a draw and maybe someday bring it back. We went to vacation rentals because we had a long-term tenant that was obnoxious and terrible and they kept the place erect. But at the time, when I showed up at the house, they were always neat, very respectful to me. And then when we went to court, we had Cindy on the bench. And if you know Cindy Platschert all from our angle, it's useless trying to get anybody out with her in there. She always sides with the resident. We're the evil landowners. But we try to run our business by the golden rule. We want to, I wouldn't want anything objectionable next door to me. I want my people to be respectful and we tell everyone that comes the same thing. And again, look at registration, not at ordinance. This is, this is, as the lawyer friend said, that's the atomic bomb. It's, your nose way too much in my business. And the net result will be, I will not look at any more vacation rentals in this area. Every vacation rental we put together, the houses are beautiful and better than many in the neighborhood. And this will drive down property values. Why? Because there'll be less competition for homes in the area. The more buyers, the higher prices go. Another reason why I don't like the restrictions that are in there is actually the way it's set up. It would be illegal for me to host my family. I have six kids, ten grandkids, all of which live out of state. Why? Greener fields elsewhere, more money to be made. And here we're lost. And if I got the ten grandkids and the six kids together and the four in-laws, I'm overcapacity. Overcapacity to my own house where they grew up. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I think we all want the same thing, it's just how we get there. Any other public comments? No other public comments? I'll entertain a motion to close our...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I waited too long. Can I come up?
Yeah, come on up, Chris. Couldn't you say on the aisle, see?
Pardon me? Oh, no. You know, I hesitated to come before, okay. I'm Chris Dombrowski, own property at seven four two seven Dyke Road and seven four one seven. But I live in Casco Township. So we have been business owners in Algenac for over thirty years. We've owned our, what we use now as a vacation rental since the early nineties. It was either ninety-three or ninety-four, I can't remember exactly. But when we bought the house, it was in terrible condition and we rented it out for years. Finally, in the beginning, we had some good renters, maybe the first ten, twelve years. The last eight to ten years were horrible. If the police were here, they would probably remember coming to our property. We had our last renter, when it was long-term, within weeks of him moving in, we have four units, he drove everyone else away. So we had one renter, not enough income to pay the taxes or the insurance. It was, we couldn't maintain it because we didn't have any income. He turned our apartment house into a drug house. The police were there all the time. They never took him away, it just, it was a nightmare. I was afraid to go in my own building the last year or so that this guy was there. It was brought to my attention the good idea of turning it into a vacation rental. Well, we were very busy with our other business, so I didn't do it for a long time. Finally did it. I couldn't stand this guy anymore, I had to figure something out. So we asked him to leave, he did finally leave. We scraped together enough money to update the house and we had our first renters in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. Since then, we have had, I wish I had a statistic of the repeat business. People love to come here. If you were at my place right now, there would be people sitting around picnic table, talking about their day, talking about their boats, talking about when they're coming back. I have someone there right now who, last summer, he was here for five weeks. Not continuously, a week here, two weeks there. And I said, "Mark, how much vacation time do you get?" I mean, he's like a brother to me now, he's there all the time. He has six or seven weeks vacation. He's from Cincinnati and he loves Lake St. Clair. I saw him today, I said, "You getting ready to go out?" And he says, "I'm gonna go to the state park and ride my mountain bike." He doesn't come here just for fishing. He comes here to get away from the VA hospital in Cincinnati where he works. This is paradise to him. Anyway, since we have turned our house into a vacation rental, we have spent a fortune at Lumberjack. We have hired local contractors, electricians, plumbers, carpenters. Right now, my vacation rental is nicer than my house. I would like to stay there, I have never ever slept in that building. But if I was on vacation, I would love to come there. Everything is just very nice. It's comfortable, it's an old classic house, it has its roots in fishing, it's over a hundred years old. I love to tell people about how the Lipinski's... I love to tell people about how the Lipinskis had people come there from the city to commercial fish 100 years ago. And now people are coming there to fish Lake St. Clair for fun. You know, it's just, it's a great place and people love to come here. So I agree with everything everybody said about the smoke detectors and the exit signs and all of that. We have plenty of parking, our property is commercial property. I don't even really think, the way it's written, that we are under this ordinance, but I feel for the people that are doing the same thing. There's a lot of us that have these houses, we know each other, we refer to each other when we are busy, which happens all the time. There is not enough places for people to stay this time of year in our area. The other thing I want to say, if you were to come to my house, and this is the last thing I want to say. And if you looked to the south, you would see my horrible privacy fence that Clay Township will not let me replace. I would like to hire and spend about 10 grand to put up the privacy fence. But I went to the building department and they said, no, you can't have what you have now. So I'm keeping my horrible fence because on the other side of my horrible fence is a building behind the old Crystal Bar that's been underwater for the last two years. The roof is falling apart, it's a horrible eyesore. There's raccoons that live in the roof. And that's maybe what the guy sitting around the tankler looking at right now. I would love to put the fence up so people can't see that. You know, there's the restaurant going up, that's a beautiful place. We'll see how that all works out. I mean, it's a shame that I can't put up a nice fence, but I have to look at an ugly building. Or, yes, ugly building over there. She's done a lot of work on the front, but the back should be condemned. And I don't know what the process is of that. This is the first time I've publicly said that because I don't like to tell people what they can and can't do on their property, but that is an eyesore. And I'd also invite you to come to my place. It's really nice and I'm very proud of it.
Chris, I've been to Swan Creek, it's a great spot.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comments?
Well, since I'm up. Something that hasn't been addressed. Okay, my name is Jacqueline Ackerman and...
Your address, please?
It is 7537 Dyke Road in Fairhaven. And what hasn't been addressed is a neighbor issue. You know, say, okay, in my instance, my neighbor, she wasn't, I don't know, I had an issue with the neighbor. We decided our place was a mess. People have seen over the years how much work we've done and we fixed it up very nicely, I mean, very nicely, for long-term tenants. And similar to what was just stated, they destroyed the place. And we did, we had drug dealers, we had people, you know, coming in, all their boyfriend moved in from prison, I mean, just nightmare issues. And we kept thinking, if we make it nice, we'll get a better clientele. But even that didn't work. And, you know, they're like, living in the state park, now they're moving into our place. They're like one step up. So, anyway, so with the short-term rental, we invested, borrowed, and did what we had to do and improved our entire landscaping, seawall, all this stuff. Spent a lot of money. And, but our neighbor didn't like our landscaping, didn't like the fact that suddenly now our dilapidated boathouse is gone and we have beautiful deck, docks, and we're going to start using our yard. And they're like, what? Keep on telling me that here? No, no, we can't have this. And running to the township and complaining about us. Now, we're...
This is in Ira or Clay?
In Ira.
Okay, I'm confused.
I know. But just as an example, complaining, they're doing this, they're doing that. What are they doing next? They're renting kayaks, they're opening a kayak business. Okay, people that live there got a couple kayaks because now they can use the yard and enjoy it. So, and a lot of complaints, a lot of letters that we got that were instantly debunked, like, no, if she'd have come over and asked us, we'd told her what's going on, no, that's not happening, you know? And this constant back and forth. And now, that was last year. And our township is doing the same thing. And I think due to this person being very active and going in all the time, like, we have to live next to this, we have to live next to this rental place. Well, we've been a rental place for over 60 years, okay? It's not just something new. You're always going to be next to a rental place. You built your house next to a rental place. So there's no repercussion for a neighbor with them down. And this year, she actually apologized. Because now she sees, like, actually, there are drug dealers showing up here, there are a bunch of losers hanging out. These are legitimate, good people coming to stay at our place and having a great time. And so what is there to prevent a neighbor from being the person that's trying to take you out? And I would suggest perhaps a bond or something like that for complaints of neighbors. You know, you want to charge us $500, then, you know, it's no way for that person to even make a complaint.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Well, it should be something. It should be like...
You've got to charge people with a complaint?
You can charge me $500. There should be some kind of...
Yeah, you can't do that.
Well, all right, well, you're creative. Why not? Some kind of bond. If it's proven that we are negligent in whatever we're doing, fine, get your money back. If it's proven we're, you know, crazy, fine, fine me $500. I don't see, you know, where is there, anywhere in the ordinance to prevent a neighbor from making you like hell when all you're doing is trying to improve things?
I know what you're saying.
Okay, so I'd just say it's like something to think about.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have new information for us?
Just something to add.
Well, no, I have some people behind you.
I'm sorry, but...
It's not all about you, Sarah.
I'm sorry. Wanted to feed off of that last comment.
Good evening. My name is Joyce McPlonan and I live in Shelby Township. And when we were talking to my husband Mark, we have the place on Inglewood. I just want to say just one thing to add to what Jackie just said. We've had that place on Inglewood since 1994. Like we said, we had to move away and, you know, and put what we kept, okay? We were friends with those people on the block and on Lake Drive and everything, okay? Our kids went to school with each other, okay? But now, now, it's a different story. And for some reason, like she said, they got a bit dead against us. I mean, I walk down the street, I say hi. I don't get a response, I get eyes glaring at me. Okay, I didn't do nothing wrong, I swear. I said hi, I didn't do nothing. I've had people say things like that. And it's like you try and like wave across the canal. Good idea. I've got to look and see. And I'm just saying, please take that into consideration. And over the years, over on the street, there have been ways people have called.
I'm aware.
Okay, and please keep that into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jim Ackerman, 7517 Dyke Road, Fairhaven. And I just wanted to bring up some of the positives about our Airbnbs.
There's lots of positives.
Yeah, well, one instance that happened this weekend. Last year, a doctor came and stayed at our place, him and his wife.
Yeah, we got your email.
Okay, you read about it.
Yeah, and everyone's...
Well, I don't know that everybody here...
Well, they're not the decision makers. They're not the decision makers.
All right, nothing more to be said then?
Okay, yeah. No, there's a lot of... I know several people who rent Airbnbs and end up buying houses here because of it. There's lots of positives about it, so. Any other public comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for short-term rentals.
I will make that motion at, to close the public hearing at 8:00.
Support. Okay, we have a motion of support, any discussion on it? I thought we had some good discussion and good comments. Thank you, everybody. All in favor of closing the public hearing for short-term rentals? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have a public hearing for soil removal permits. I'll entertain a motion to open.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for soil removal permits.
Okay, we have motion and second at 8:00. Any discussion? Everybody in favor of a public hearing for soil removal permits? Signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Like to open up the public hearing for soil removal permits? Do we have any public comments on soil removal permits? Any public comments on soil removal permits? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close our public hearing on soil removal permits.
I'll make a motion to close our hearing on soil removal permits at 8:01.
Support. Okay, we have a motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have bills payable. I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to pay the bills at $201,545.52.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Maureen.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
All right, yes, Chrissy?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, moving right along to our supervisor's report. Where is it? Here. The highlight of the night, always is supervisor's report. All right, as I've been doing for the last two years, I think, probably more, I start off with a high water report. Our water levels have been maintaining, which is really awesome right now. I go by the water gauge in Algonquin. We're at 576.5. We've been there for at least two months or if not more. And anybody that's been around in the area, you know, May and June is when it starts creeping up. And it's not, so that's a good thing. I think right now we're about 18 inches below where we were this time last year. And so, yeah, it's definitely a good thing. Let's see. I myself have been working on the budgets, a lot of long-term and short-term claim for the township business, you know, budget time for the following year. Our year goes from July 1st to June 30th. Let's see. Been doing a lot of work this past couple of weeks with the financing and closing on the fire trucks purchase. And actually, they are due to be delivered tomorrow around 2:00. So we're going to have some nice shiny, brand-new fire trucks here. Way excited about that. These are way cool fire trucks. I'm totally, Chief did an excellent job in designing these things. I'm negotiating, we're in the middle of negotiating a new collective bargaining agreement with the MAFF Firemen's Union. In fact, we've got a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. with them. And just been doing a lot of work on the short-term rental ordinance, sewer interceptor, the bike path, which they're going to do the seal coating on Wednesday. Reason it hasn't been done sooner is he's been having a hard time getting materials to actually do, you know, it's quite a big area. He can only get like 20 pounds of this material. He needs like 3,000, or I don't know, a lot of it. But he called me actually today, he says, I got it finally. And we're going to start Wednesday on sealing the bike path. Been doing a lot of work with project control projects, the Harsons Island Nature Park that we're doing with a kayak launch, the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier. And the upgrades there were no limit fishing charters going in there. It's going to provide charter boat fishing for handicapped people in wheelchairs. They'll be able to take, and they're going to be totally free, probably about four charters a week. And they're going to be geared for, you know, handicapped people, veterans, and that sort of thing, where we're going to take them out fishing for a day for free. So that's way cool. The new Pearl Beach Fishing Pier sign is probably going to go up in the next week or two. Where else am I?
Wifi is broken.
Yep, we got wifi, it's installed in the park. And...
Someone just...
Oh, we mentioned about having ordinance about how much power residents can have with all the girl houses going out requesting more hands. This was asked from us with DTE. We're starting that negotiation with legal and our billing department. So we should have something before us soon on that. Just wanted to make sure, too, the DDA did approve $125,000 to purchase for new equipment for our new trucks. And that's this year's budget. So that was nice of the DDA. And we've been looking at, it's actually a leasing plan. At first I was very skeptical about this, where instead of the township, we buy police cars, we buy trucks for DPW, our water department, and such, some for the fire. But instead of doing purchases, to actually do a leasing program. And we've talked to several townships and municipalities that have been doing this and it seems to be very beneficial to them, to whoever's doing it. It's going to provide us newer vehicles and it should put some money back into our budget. So it's a good plan, actually. And that should be coming to our board if, next meeting or two. We've had three meetings with the department. This isn't for public comments, sir. But it's, I'm excited about that. I just want to let the board know the DDA did approve the engineering for the new public bathrooms and other improvements at the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier also. So far, we got an estimated cost of about $94,000 for that. And that will be in the budget for next year for the DDA. Oh, I mentioned the Pearl Beach sign. And actually, they were putting some big oak pilings on each side of it. And I got Champions Auto Ferry to donate those to us, so that's pretty cool. Wifi is now installed in the park. St. John's Marsh, we did a cleanup last May 8th, a week ago. MTA actually provided a garbage truck for us free at charge to help with the cleanup. We had over 60 volunteers, it was a good day, even though it was cold. But we had a great turnout. And I think that's about it. Okay, moving right along, we have public comments. Do we have any other public comments on anything? Any public comments?
I just wanted to comment on one thing. It's not related to the rental. All right, you mentioned that handicap boat thing?
Yes.
The spokesman for that group was at our Anchor Bay Rotary Meet last Wednesday. Yeah, and it sounds like it's going to be a great program. And they've worked out a good facility here. And it's going to be open to a lot of people that don't get the chance to go on the lake or the flats. And it's going to be a good...
Yeah, I'm excited about it. Even if they just want to go out for a boat ride.
Right, that's what some of them will do.
Yeah, you know, some are going to be hardcore, let's go musky fishing, others would, you know, let's just go catch some little perch, you know, I'll be happy, or just go for a boat ride.
And they'll all have life jackets.
That's right. Thank you.
It's just the smallest of pet peeves. Every DPW department I've seen in any municipality, when they come up to do service... Every DPW department I've seen in any municipality, when they come up to do service, they always leave the vehicle running. And they come in the house with 10...
No, I think we turn ours off.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's amazing.
All right. Okay, any other public comments? Hearing none. Move right along to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of four meeting minutes of May 3rd, 2021, and check reports, bills paid in between meetings.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any questions or discussion on any of those items? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a whole slew of resolutions we got to pass, and unfortunately, we have to do every resolution by roll call. And I wish I had a clerk here. So, first thing under new business, we have a contract for additional duties for supervisor, clerk, and treasurer. Like to add additional duties for salary, for the salary. Yeah, we need a motion. I'll entertain a motion. I don't want to make a motion on my own contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2021-09 to set the annual salary...
No, no, this is the contract.
Oh, the contract for make a motion to approve the additional duties of the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, and this would hold the supervisor, treasurer, and clerk more accountable. We do a lot of things that is not statutory requirement, and this gives the board more control over us, that we make sure we do our, the job that we're assumed that we shouldn't be doing. So, we have motion and support. Is there any discussion on this?
Same as what I said, right?
Yep. Okay, no discussion. Roll call vote. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 2021-09, set the salary of the...
Township supervisor.
Township supervisor at $42,000 a year.
Support.
Ah, that's not a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021-09 to set the annual salary of the township supervisor of $42,000 per annum.
Yep. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, moving right along. We have Resolution to set the annual sal, or the annual term salary for the clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021-10 to set the annual salary of the township clerk at $42,000 per annum plus $500 per required election held to the clerk beginning July 1st, 2021. 2021 associated with each election.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we have Resolution 2021-11, treasury salary. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-11 to set the annual salary of the township treasurer at $42,000 per annum.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I have to ask Chrissy vote for herself.
I know. Okay, deputy salary. I entertain a motion to set the annual deputy's salary.
How do I have that?
For the deputy stipend.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-12 to set the annual deputy salary stipends at... At $3,650.32.
Yep.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Okay, Resolution 2113, parks and rec coordinator stipend. Entertain a motion. Come on, Maureen, make a motion.
I make a motion, I don't, I'm not looking for the total. 3650?
Hmm, 34...
No, it's 44.578.
I make a motion to accept Resolution 2021-13, parks and rec coordinator stipend, set the annual salary at $44.5578 annually.
Okay, we got motion and support. Any discussion? She does a lot of work for you, I will say that. All, or no, roll call vote. Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark, yes. And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, Resolution 2021-14, our FOIA coordinator stipend.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14 to set the FOIA coordinator stipend annually at $2,137.25.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Gary keeps our board of FOIA coordinator busy. All right, roll call vote. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. And Resolution 2021-15, the trustees' salary. Entertain a motion. You want to do it, Chrissy?
I'll do it. Resolution, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-15 to set the annual salary for the trustees at $5,305.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Was that joined?
Yes.
Yeah. Roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have to set a public hearing for our township budget, June 7th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date for the township budget for June 7th, 2021.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion on that? It's going to be at 7:00. Okay. Yeah, June 7th meeting? 7:00. All right, roll call vote. Maureen?
Yes.
No, we don't have to do a roll call vote for this one. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, and then I don't see any paperwork. Do we have any paperwork on the firework permit?
I don't see it.
Okay, I have, we do probably have time to postpone it. Erin, I can't remember his last name off the top...
Riordan.
Riordan. Sent me an email, he wants to do a firework display at the end of North Channel on July 3rd from a barge. He's got the okay from the Coast Guard chief and everything else.
Did he do this last year?
No, this is the first time for this one. He's got the licenses and stuff. I don't, I don't know why the paperwork isn't in here.
Can we approve the pending paperwork?
We can approve it. I would say we can approve it pending paperwork and chief's blessings.
Okay, make a motion to approve the fireworks, July 3rd, Aaron Reden, location North Channel by Anchor Bay Drive.
DNR launch.
DNR launch, pending approved paperwork and approval by the Platte Township Fire Chief.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Did you get that?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion on that? That's probably a pretty good spot to have it. Actually, I think he's going to have the barge south of, just below the DNR launch in Whitmore's, there's a little marsh there, and that's where he's going to move the barge to, to shoot him, so...
His experience?
Yes, actually. So I've talked to him a couple, three times. I'll remind you, Chief, gets that email to you too.
I never got any of the licenses or anything like that.
I know, I haven't either. I'm not, I'll ping the old club tomorrow, and I'm not sure if Shortier's going to do one. So I'll ping those guys along. All right, we have motion and support for approving these fireworks.
Yep.
Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're getting some fire trucks tomorrow. We need to sell some fire trucks. So this is approval to sell our fire trucks per our policy. Chief, want to say anything on this, or?
I have a company located in Lansing interested in both vehicles. They want to purchase the tanker that we want to sell that's on the island, it's a 1986, and then the 1995 Pierce Lance. So what I'll do is, once I get the quote, I'll bring it to you, Chrissy and Cindy, to get your blessing on it before we make that decision, if I get the permission from the board to sell those trucks.
I'm sure you're going to make sure they meet up with the Blue Book or whatever it's called, be a fair price. I trust you.
Who gets the money? Fire.
Good.
Fire.
It's going to buy, buy new equipment.
That'll be great.
Yep.
So, did they give us any idea yet?
As far as what they're worth?
Yeah.
The tanker's worth between $5,000 and $7,000, and the engine's worth between $15,000 and $20,000.
Yeah. So...
It's great that you found interest already, so that's good.
Yeah. Does that include all the hoses on it?
No.
Equipment on, that's a bare bones truck.
Yep, we're keeping the equipment.
Okay.
And the fittings.
Yeah. Any questions for, do we have more, do we have motion?
I'll make a motion to put the following vehicles up for sale, from the Platte Township Fire Department, 1995 Land's Fire Engine with a VIN number of record and a 1986 SNS fire apparatus, 200-gallon tank and tanker, VIN number of no... 2,000 gallons.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'm actually kind of excited about this. In a selfish way, we have a lease agreement for someone to open up our concession stand in the park. And they are going to keep it open all summer long while the school during, school vacation, six days a week. And then, once school starts up, they'll probably go to three, four days a week. And I know it's not in the, in the lease contract, but part of it is because we've been looking for someone, because, you know, we give it to them a little bit on the cheap side, but, but we have eyes in the park, someone there, and this will allow me, I already have the funds approved with DDA and from this board a long time ago, to put a shed up there and get all kinds of fun park stuff, like croquet sets, bocce ball, horseshoes, soccer, you know, volleyball. Because you get to a park, you don't have the equipment. No one brings it. So they'll be able to check stuff out and have fun, you know, if you have a party going on, let's go over there, and, you know, they'll grab the ID or whatever and check it out and have fun. So I want to get one of those really big chess sets that they set up, and it's going to be way fun. I'm going to have fun shopping.
Or maybe tic-tac-toe.
Yeah, the tic, the tic...
Don't play chess.
Yeah, the tic-tac-toe stuff, and, yes.
Any possibility for Mr. Twister?
No. No Mr. Twister. So, and we do have it in the budget with the DDA, I wanted to mention it too, this year to purchase, there'll probably be three stations out there, outside, really good outside exercise equipment, like, you know, bench table, elliptical. So you can almost, we'll have a gym out there. And there'll be walking stations, you know, you walk, you know, you do stretching here and, and, you know, the leg stuff, the arm stuff, and core and everything else.
That's been in the works, but you...
Oh, yes, well...
Really working on it now.
No, no, well, honestly, the high water, kind of, you know, so that's, that's in the works too. But anyhow, we have the concession stand lease agreement. So someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the perk concession lease, stand lease agreement in a lump sum of $2,000, $1,000 upon execution of the lease agreement, and $1,000 on August 30th, 2021.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Have to do roll call on contracts? Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay.
Standing yes.
All right. Next, we have soil, approve the soil removal permits. First one, we have Elgin Act Sand and Supply. Gary's here, if we have any questions.
Is this the first time this owner has applied for removal?
This one, yeah, it was just sold from Blue Water Material.
Okay, okay. And I know the gentleman that did buy that.
Yep. And Gary's been out there.
I really don't have a problem with it myself.
Is it just business as usual, taking over from Blue Water?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, this is a yearly thing.
Okay.
So, and, and this allows us, we go out, we inspect, make sure there's, you know, no issues that are obvious, and vote from there.
I'll make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for Elgin Act Sand and Supply.
It's just...
No.
Yeah.
There's a second time, or we do it one at a time.
Yeah, we do it one at a time.
I'll support.
Okay, we have motion and support for the Elgin Act Sand and Supply Soil Removal Permit. Motion and support. Roll call. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie?
Yes.
And then we have Silent Acre Farms on Harson's Island, same... And then we have Silent Acre Farms on Harrison's Island, same, same song and dance, need to renew their soil removal permit. I see John sitting in the back. How are you doing there, John?
I'm having a seat now.
Yeah, I almost was gonna invite you to come sit up here.
I'm fine.
Okay. I know.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for Silent Acres Farm.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussions, questions? Hearing none. DeMaureen?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Now, we have the short-term vacation rental ordinance. I, myself, I'm gonna recommend that we postpone it, for obvious reasons. We had a lot of good discussion tonight, I think, and it brought up some valid points. I definitely think the language can be cleaned up better. There's some places as ambiguous. And I will agree, you know what, I'm a lot bigger fan of short-term rentals than long-term rentals. Short-term rentals, they do better upkeep on their property because the customers also rate them as a rent them. I've done it several times myself, all over the, all over the US. And then, the renters actually rate the customers too. So, and, you know, problem is, long-term, you get someone in there that's bad, and it's hard to, for them to get them out, and you're kinda stuck there. And by all honesty, I think we, and everybody knows, I'm not a real big fan of ordinances, but I think we do need a long-term rental ordinance too, because we have issues with safety issues, and things that, that go on with them. So.
Well, before we make a motion, I have one question. Do all short-term rental owners have a license from St. Clair County?
No, I don't think there's a license required for the county.
No, it is a business, isn't it?
Yeah.
Do they have a business license?
Well, they could have an LLC, or you could do it as.
And if they don't have a business license, what's wrong with the ordinance?
Well, there's no problems with, I don't think they're, they're saying there's a problem with the ordinance. But.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, to recommend that motion that you said, and this is an emotion right now.
Right.
You know, I can, you know, we can look at number two on the ordinance, bedroom, private plan intended for sleeping. Actually, that, to me, that could be removed. Number three, the croquet.
I was gonna recommend where, I think it's under 10 for the driveway, could also be allowed to be gravel, gravel or stone.
And that.
They've talked about meeting with us. I mean.
Right.
Is an ordinance really necessary if you haven't had any problems? I mean, if we just have them registered? I know my neighbors have.
Most, most short-term rental owners already have their.
Can we make a motion first, and I'll open up the discussion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we postpone.
I support that.
To another meeting, okay. So, discussion, so.
While we have the whole board here.
Right, and we'll have the whole board here. But now, go ahead, and I, and I'll be very candid. Most of these complaints are coming from about two or three roads in the, in one area in the township. I've met with these people, not, I don't think any of them are here tonight. I met with these people three, four times, and I said, it's not a, a, a problem for the, the whole township wide. Like I say, I have them right next door, but it could be. I mean, I do think we need to have a registration and everything else.
I think a registration, but I don't know if we need an ordinance, if we have a lot of trouble.
But in that, where it is, they're on private roads. And I asked them, why don't you form a homeowners association on your three roads, and do it through a homeowners association? Why, why do, why do it whole township wide for a problem that's on this small area? And they were, they never acted on it. So, I will say that. And I'm sure I'll get some nasty phone calls tomorrow, but it, but it's true. I sat in my office, I, yeah, I understand your issues, I understand your problems. You know, we have noise ordinance, we have fireworks ordinance, we have, it's a private road, so the parking thing's a little different, handled differently. But I agree, you know, that they shouldn't allow on-street parking for these places. But a lot of it can be handled, so, in other ways, like, you know, calling the police or whatever.
So tweak it, you can tweak it.
So, I, yeah, it needs to be tweaked, it needs to be hammered out a little bit, and.
What about sending it back to the planning commission?
Well, this isn't a planning, this is, that's the thing. I kinda thought this is a zoning, a land use ordinance, but it's, it's not, it's, for some reason, it came to us as a regular ordinance.
Okay.
As opposed to a land use. I think the big reason is, so.
You guys agree, I agree.
Yeah, so. That's why I thought it was important we have, have a public hearing for it, and, and to get these, these comments. And, and they were, you know, it was, it was interesting. So, I think we should go back, you know, this is kinda the rough draft that we got from the planning commission. We should go back and tweak it a little bit. I'll talk to our lawyer about it, and, and make it, so, I think everybody in the whole room wants the same thing. We really do, you know. We want to make sure that you guys are successful, we wanna make sure the township's successful, as you guys want us to be successful. Nobody wants problems in the, in the neighbors, neighborhoods. And we wanna maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and the character. And that's what we, we need to strive to do. It is important that if there is a problem, that someone calls the police, that we, that they know who to contact, as far as, hey, we have an issue going on, do you guys wanna deal with it, or do you want the boys in blue to deal with it, type thing. And, or both. And that type of a thing. Because, you know, right now, we have nothing. And there are several, several of them.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
I mean, if you go on to Airbnb, I mean, they're all, there's North Clay Township, I know a five up there, and, and we've never gotten any complaints from anybody except for these two or three roads.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, not.
That's why I feel, I mean, an ordinance is not really necessary at this time. I think if we were, they have a more widespread problem, I think a registration is important.
I just don't know how we deal with the problems if we don't have any, any type of ordinance.
I think, I think we need an ordinance so we can tweak it later.
I don't know.
You may not need one now, but maybe you need.
Right.
If it's just for one or two homes.
Well.
And I just wanna say, you know, if you look at the history of this board, how much work we've done for parks and outdoor activities to bring people to this area, we all know when we drive down the street how beautiful this area is. I go to association meetings, and, you know, everybody's like, where are you from? And, you know, the largest freshwater delta in the northern hemisphere, and, you know, the sturgeon capital of the world, like, everyone wants to come here. But at the beginning of this, and listening, I know myself, listening to public comment during the planning commission meetings, it was all people talking, and I put, I try to put myself in everyone's shoes. That would be a nightmare to live through what they're saying they're living through. Thirty people in a house, you know, they're taking up the canal with floating, with floaties, they're, they're driving all over their landscape. I mean, people spend thousands of dollars on landscaping, and then to have somebody, you know, they're trying to jam cars in everywhere, that would be a nightmare. So, I think the people that came here tonight to speak about it, these are all responsible rental owners. But what we've heard from previously are all the people that are living in a nightmare. So, we somehow, and I would like to speak with some of you, how, what do we do to get a happy medium? I know, we've stayed on vacation, I mean, the last rental agreement that I had to sign, two cars, no more than 10 people, no smoking, no parties, no noises. Do you guys have these kind of rental agreements?
Absolutely.
Because the people that are living in these nightmare situations, it sounds to me like their owners are MIA. We're, they're not taking care of it.
That's maybe what we should have on files, is their standard, standard agreement.
You know, do they have, I had to pay a $1,000 security deposit a month before we went, and I didn't get it back for three weeks after we went. Is everyone doing that? I mean, these are the kinds of things that we need to know, so that we can, you know, figure out what to do with the poor people that are living with a frat house next door. You know, they're bringing in portageons so that they can have more bathrooms for more people. And, you know, that goes to the, to the limiting the number of people in the bedrooms, is because, you know, if you've got great big bedrooms, could you pack 15 kids in there? I mean, who wants to have that? Yeah, no, I'm just saying, these are things that, feel free to email me, because I'm reading all of this and thinking, what can we do to make this better for everyone?
Comment after you're done?
No.
No.
Well, I don't know what, I.
You can send me an email or give me a phone call.
Send us an email. But, no, you're right, Chrissy, and, and we just gotta try to protect everybody's interests, and, and make it work. And I, I think that some of the things that were said at the planning commission were exaggerated a little bit and everything, but then there's an enforcement issue, like, they wanted to say, oh, you can't have more than six people. One person called me up. Shouldn't be able to be a lot more than six people to spend the night in a house. Well, number one, how are you enforcing? How do you know if they're visiting, or where they're sleeping? I mean, that's unenforceable, number one. And number two, I asked the person, so do I need to pass an ordinance that only six people per dwelling is allowed to spend the night in a house? I mean, no. Right.
I get like very young, and the house next to me, before they sold it, a really big home, and there's also a room above the garage. And I mean, one, I would see different people each weekend. They were always very respectful. But there were literally, I mean, maybe 20 people sometimes staying there. But the house could accommodate it, the driveway could accommodate it, everyone was very respectful. You know, with this kind of ordinance, something like that could happen.
Right.
So, I don't even think they registered as a bed and breakfast.
Well, they don't, right now, they don't have to.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, so, at least if we could get them on the radar with the registration, and let them know, you know, we're watching over, and if there's complaints, then, you know, they're gonna be fine. I don't know, I just.
Or at least we would know, you know, as they were speaking about earlier, at least we would know who to call, and they would take care of it.
Right, I'm just with keeping us out of the public.
You don't have anyone to call, you don't have anyone to take care of it, other than sending the police.
And with them, it was like, stay out of their business, it's their business, you know. It's just how I feel. So, I don't know. We can accomplish it with the registration instead of an ordinance, and they handle it, and.
So, we're agreeing to have further discussion. What I'm gonna do, I'll, I'll try to summarize all the concerns. I'll ship it off to our, our new planner, and attorney, and, and see if they can morph something that will, that will take care of their concern, everybody's concerns.
Okay.
And then, well, I'll distribute it to you guys, and, and then I have about six or seven emails. I'll shoot it to you guys. Okay, does that sound good?
Good, yep.
And, and I'll even shoot it to your friends across the canals, and, and, you know, to hash it out, and, and take it from there.
Please include the planning chair.
Yes.
With that.
Well, I'll send it to the whole planning commission.
We'll have a cool board.
Right, yeah, because we're missing two people.
And if the neighborhood is that concerned, they can create their own association and deal with it, so.
That was my.
Instead of us getting involved.
Right, that was my, my.
I think that's a great idea.
That was my original, original comment to them, it was over two years ago.
That's what should be happening.
Create a homeowners associ, because they have private roads. Create a homeowners association, and deal with it locally, you know.
But unfortunately, we see it a lot, that they want to call the township, and they want one of us to deal with the issue, instead of.
Instead of them.
Talking.
Well, exactly, they don't wanna deal with it, but if they're that upset, they're gonna have to do it. And if we take a hard, fast no, because, you know, basically, there's a, you're, you're the problem, there's only a few people that are the problem, we don't wanna affect all of these other people for a few bad apples.
Right.
And they're gonna know, okay, we're gonna have to do something about it on our own. Is this all board member comments?
Yep, no, no, we're not there yet.
We're in discussion. Sounds like it though.
Well, no, we're talking about short term. So, anything else on, I have a motion and support for postponing. Gary?
Yeah, are you gonna give us a date, when it would come back on, or give us plenty of notice?
We'll give you plenty of notice.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It might be the next, I, it's not, I'm gonna.
The planner.
I'm gonna get the plant, everyone involved, get their, you know, I'll shoot this stuff off, probably end of business tomorrow, and then, you know, once we get some feedback.
The next meeting has the budget and everything, so I think.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
We wait till middle of the.
Yeah, I mean, you know, truthfully, when we, when we passed marijuana, I wanted anything, I didn't care. We need a marijuana ordinance, because we're, we're seriously lacking, we can tweak it. But this, we, we have time, in my mind, to tweak it a little bit.
Yeah.
So. All right, any more discussion? All in favor of postponing the short-term vacation rentals ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion is postponed, or it's all postponed. All right, next, board member comments. Chrissy?
I'll just talk briefly for a minute about when we go to MTA, we always sit in on sessions, and they talk about unintended consequences.
Yes.
And so, I think, you know, listening to what we've previously listened to, and listening to what we've listened to tonight, we just have to always be mindful of unintended consequences, because I sat through an MTA workshop a couple of years ago now, about where the whole short-term rental started around Torch Lake, and, you know, multimillion dollar homes, and they fell into the wrong hands, and people couldn't, they couldn't go in their yards. They couldn't, I mean, that's all we heard, and I thought, oh, what a nightmare, you know. So, just try to put yourself in those people's shoes, and, you know, we just wanna be making sure we're not hurting the property owners, and we're not hurting the neighbors around with unintended consequences.
Very good, thank you. Joanne?
I have no, nothing to say. No comment.
Feeling okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Mark?
I learn an awful lot, listening.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we do have a planning commission meeting, May 26th, we'll be addressing the open water fencing, actually, I think, open, open hearing. And I'd just like to comment on, first of all, things we're probably going, we really appreciate what you're doing, we admire, we have no, no problem whatsoever. With the computer? What?
Nothing. The static, you're still with static.
Okay, all right, no, I can't say. Keep talking.
Keep talking.
Lost my train of thought. But anyways, as we move forward, I'm sure we're gonna be, we have a good partnership relationship going forward, and I'm all for that. Thank you.
I just wanna say I'm happy to see so many faces without masks, healthy people, and we got Memorial Day coming up, so be safe.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for coming, everybody. It was, it was good to be here, we got a lot done. Um, yeah, thank you for coming, everybody. It was, it was a good meeting. We got a lot done. And, um, yeah, I, I'd like, definitely like, you know, having discussion and, and we'll, we'll get there sooner or later. Sometimes it takes a while. So.
That's kind of large, I would hope.
Yeah, you know, other than that, there's a lot of, we have a lot of positive things happening in the township. I mean, it's really fun. Let me, I'll just say, the last two years, our jobs were challenging. With high water and COVID. It was very challenging and it was very hard to get things done that we really wanted to. Because we were putting out fires and if you remember this year, last year, it was against law for us to take our own boats out and go fishing in the river. OMG. And, and now, you know, myself and Chris, we don't have to deal with these issues. We can, we're doing more fun things. Like, we're building a beautiful beach park down the road. We're having a nature park going in on Harrison's Island. We got this, you know, we're, we're sprucing up the Pearl Beach fishing pier in the area with fixing the bike path. I mean, this is awe, you know. This is why we're here. So I'm, I'm glad to get back to that kind of business again. So I just, it makes me feel a lot better. So that's all I got to say. One more motion.
Motion to a jury.
Okay. All day or eyes. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.